All right. We are gonna get started with the City Council Workshop for Tuesday, November 14, 2017. Let the record show that, is this too close? Let the record show that the entire council is present. And so with that first thing on the agenda is discussion items, DS-17-112, discussion agenda items for regular City Council meeting of November 28, 2017. And the first thing is our resolutions, RS-17-117, Consider Memorandum Resolution, granting a deed without warranty to Tanya K. Robinson Malone for property located at 501 Lisa Lane in Colleen, Texas, for property erroneously deeded to the City of Colleen. Mrs. Brig, welcome.
Thank you. Before you, I have an item to deed some property to someone. It's kind of a complicated fact situation, but I'll give you a brief background. Ms. Robinson owns some property at 501 Lisa Lane. She had purchased it back in 2007. Eventually, she married a gentleman named Mr. Malone, and he is a veteran. They want to go take advantage of the tax exemptions that he had as a veteran and receive some bad advice, I would say, and they were told to deed the property to the city, which was not the case. It should have been deeded to, from her to her and her husband. That deed was filed back in December of 2012. Excuse me. What this means is that because it's now deeded to the city, it shows it's property the city owns, and we are exempt from property taxes, so no property taxes have been paid or assessed since 2012. And what that means to Ms. Robinson, or Ms. Malone, is that she also has some limitations on what she can do with her property as far as financing and insurance and things to that effect. And just so you're aware, the appraisal value in 2017 was $94,480. Just to give you an idea where we're talking about, it's at 501 Lisa Lane. It's just off of Atkinson, where all these, where it says "private" all over here is by Colleen High School over on 38th Street. The proposed action is to reject the original conveyance, which in effect says, "We don't want your property." We didn't have that opportunity before. It was deeded. We didn't have, it never came to council to approve or accept. And so the action before you would be to reject that, to authorize the city manager to sign a deed without warranty to return the property to Ms. Robinson, and then they would have that document filed. The actual draft deed is in your packet, and that was prepared in conjunction with their attorney. And I've also confirmed with the Tax Appraisal District that once we do this, as the warranty deed is dated back to that December 29, 2012 deed, they will assess the taxes back to that date, and they are aware of that. The owners are aware of that. Well, the proposed owners. So, staff recommends that you reject the 2012 conveyance and authorize the city manager to execute a deed to return the property to Ms. Robinson Malone. Take any questions you may have.
Questions for Mrs. Brig. Mr. Oakley.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So, we get the vote of action on this next week? Next week?
Yes, it's on your next agenda.
Yeah, we won't have a meeting next week. So, two weeks.
The 28th.
28th? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Brig. We're gonna move on to public hearing, PH-17-050A, Consider Memorandum Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance of the Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Through the State Funding for the Police Department to Purchase the Resistant Body Armor. Chief Kimball, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. The Office of Governor, Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division has offered a Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Program for Texas Police Officers. This grant was in response to the shooting of police officers in Dallas last year. The department formed a small committee of subject matter experts to review the packages offered by various vendors. After review, the committee recommended that the armor be purchased from GT Distributors, a member of the Texas Byboard. The grant is offering funding in the amount of $127,350 to purchase the body armor and the armor carriers. There are no matching funds required from the city. Our recommendation is that council authorize the city manager to accept the Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Program from the Office of the Governor in the amount of $127,350 and execute the purchase from GT Distributors.
Questions for the chief. Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's minor point on the slide. It says total grant program is $127,230, but the grant funds are $127,350. It's about $120 more for the grant than what the grant program is.
Yeah, if you go back on the slide.
I believe it's a typo. I think our records were $350.
That's good.
I think it was $350. I'm almost sure it's $350.
We'll correct it before the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
PH-17-050B, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider an Ordinance Amending the FY-2018 Annual Budget and Planning Municipal Service of the City of Colleen by Increasing Revenue and Expenditure Counts for the Acceptance of the Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant Program. Mr. Locke, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is a budget amendment to recognize the acceptance of the grant that Chief Kimball just spoke of. As Chief Kimball said, the grant covers 100% of the equipment costs, and it is for the Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant. There is no impact to the general fund to acquire the equipment, and the budget amendment will increase the intergovernmental grant revenues by $127,350 and also increase an expense account by $127,350. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Locke. All right. Looks like none. You're good. All right. Moving back to our discussion items, DS-17-113, Planning Session, Review and Discuss the Financial Policy. So, this is part one. Mr. Olson.
Yes, sir. Last week, we introduced this item to the council and gave you a copy of the financial policy, indicated at that time, excuse me, that we would take time at future council meetings to discuss the details of the policy and to answer any questions that you may have. I think at that point, I told you we'd do it, we'd start in two weeks, but then we canceled the two-week meeting, so then we moved the discussion to start today instead of the 28th. Excuse me. Our intention here is that we'll go through section by section. Mr. Locke, we'll stand up and give you a quick summary of the sections, and then we'll ask you if you have any questions or comments about the section. If you do, we'll discuss it, and if you don't, we'll move to the next section. And I think there are 20, I forget, 22 sections in the policy, so it's a fairly lengthy document. There is no rush. There is no intent to try to encourage the council to move through this quickly. If it goes quickly and smoothly for the discussion, fine, and if it takes multiple meetings, then that's fine, too. We have no deadline that we're shooting for. We can talk about it as long as we need to talk about it until the council is satisfied with the policies.
All right. Very good.
So, we'll ask Mr. Locke to come up and start the process.
All right. Welcome back, Mr. Locke.
Thank you again, Mayor and City Council. And if you are, if you would like to follow along in your book, I'll try to point to the page number that we're at as we move through the different sections of the presentation. There should be a PowerPoint presentation as well, if you would like a copy of it. It was not completed in time to make the packet, so you have a printed version there. The first two sections are the table of contents and introductory statement. That information has already been presented to the City Council at the last meeting. So, we'll begin with Section 3, which covers the annual budget, and in the document, that begins on page 8. And just to provide some highlights of what this section covers, it establishes requirements for the annual budget process, and really what it does is it just states that the budget guidelines must follow those that are set forth in the City Charter, local government code, and the Texas tax code. A lot of the procedures that the city follows is following either state or local laws that are already established. So, those are just brought forth in the policy document. It also requires the city manager to submit the proposed budget after the receipt of the certified tax roll. By law, we should receive the certified tax roll by July 25, and the City Charter requires that the budget be presented to City Council no later than 45 days from the beginning of the operating year. So, that puts you right around in the middle of August. So, this, for FY-18, we were able to present the budget around August 1, because we were provided the certified roll early, but that's kind of the timeframe that City Council could expect to receive the proposed budget. It also makes available for capital improvement funding. As the city moves forward with this year, any funding that, any portion of the tax rate that is in excess of the rollback rate will be set aside for capital improvement funding. There was a portion of the tax rate that was adopted this fiscal year that was set aside for that, and that'll move for FY-18 about $1.5 million for capital improvement projects. And the budget must culminate on no later than the 20th day of September. That's when the budget has to be approved by the City Council, or the budget as submitted by the city manager will be deemed the budget that the city follows. The next section, oh, I'm sorry. I need to pause after each section and see if you have any questions about anything that I went over or anything that you went over.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start with introduction, but it ties into the next chapter. On the introduction on page 7, the last sentence of the first paragraph, "The policies are to be reviewed on an annual basis and modified to accommodate changing circumstances or conditions." I would recommend that we establish a date. It can be in conjunction with the page 8. It said, "At the beginning of the budget process each year, the council will review the financial policies." We'd say 30 days prior to the start of the budget process, two weeks prior to that in both of those, because just for us to be given a thing, we'll do it annually, was that annually from the date we adopted it, which might be during the middle of a budget process. It just clarifies, and it tells the council directive in our own policy when we will conduct that review. I'd also recommend that a timeline graphic, such as the one on page 11, be adopted also for the budget process, because you've got dates, the 45, 45 date here, the 20th date here. Throughout this document, it's not less than 10 days, no more than 30 days, not earlier than 16th day after the date. If we saw that in a graphic format, it's a ready reference card for us to know when rather than to try to figure out which one of these dates is important for the council to look at.
So, would you recommend something like the month of September, something like that, or the last quarter?
In discussion with the city manager, he said he felt that the, 1 February would be when the budget process would normally begin, then we would say sometime in January, and the city manager would make a recommendation that the council would have two weeks to do that annual review, or one week, whatever his recommendation would be to us, so that we would have a tendency to roll, that we would not take three and a half months to do that internal review. So, we'd have a center post, and then everything else would revolve around that center post. And the graphic that's sort of like on page 11, that would show us timeline, do this, do this, it starts, it starts, and gives us everything.
Are we okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll modify it.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right.
On item E, Public Hearings, there's only one place I saw in the entire policy, and this says, third line, "The governing bodies shall set the hearing date occurring no earlier than such." I've only seen that one time. Isn't it the City Council is the governing body? Everything else says the City Council will, City Council shall. And I'd recommend that if we looked at the governing body words would be.
Change governing body to City Council.
Yes, sir. On item F, this is the only time I also saw in the entire document, "That the budget shall be finally adopted by the majority of the members of the whole City Council." Is that unique in that, or we always do everything by the majority of the City Council? But the whole City Council means the mayor also, is my understanding. Maybe that's incorrect. Or why is that different from any other?
That is, that is a good point. I think when you, technically, the mayor is part of the City Council, but the intent here is that the budget be adopted by the seven members of the council and not a reduced fraction of that group.
Voting members, yeah.
Yeah, the voting members. So, we'll reword that to make that more clear, too.
Yeah, just put voting members, because it might be where it's a tie, and you gotta have the mayor vote. So, it's whoever votes at that time, some of the voting members.
It should specify voting members.
Yeah.
The voting members and not just the whole council, because we might only have six there that night. And if you say, well, you have a quorum, but if you just say the whole council, then you can't vote on it that night.
You have to specify words. You're right. Yeah.
That is, that language came from the local government code, so we just really pulled the language that's in the code and put it there.
So, we need to look at the legality of the language and make sure that we're okay and meet your intent. I don't disagree with your intent.
My last thing, Mr. Mayor, is there are several things there which I think is extremely important, that the council and I commend the city manager and the staff in placing things such as, "When developing the annual budget, the city manager shall project revenues from each source based on actual collections," and it goes on, "while considering known circumstances." And that's very important, that we as a council understand we're not going to project things that we don't know for fact. And then the, the last item was, "Will levy the lowest tax rate on the broadest tax base to achieve its mission and goals?" And I think that's, that clarifies a lot of things to me, is that I've never seen that in a written policy before. And that, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else on this section? We're still on the Section 3, right? All right. So, I guess we can move on to the next section. Mr. Oakley.
Just for Paragraph H, the property taxes, where it talks about the property taxes, says it's, we're gonna levy two types of levies, and it goes into, say, goes into debt service first. So, I think was just where it says, we talked about, it mentions operation, maintenance, and then interest sinking. So, I'm thinking that's the section where we talk about, the first part is for operation and maintenance, and it goes on that, and then you call, we call, we're calling debt service. Is it debt servicing or interest in sinking? Because those are three.
We probably need to choose which way we want to refer to and stick to it. We're referring to the same thing there. So, it is just operations and maintenance, and interest in sinking is for debt service. And so, we can revise that, sticking to one, one way of referring to it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris, did you have a question?
I was gonna say, when we were having a discussion about you using the word "hold", I mean, unless it was, unless it was your intent for the whole City Council to be present, then I was just gonna say I agree with just changing it to voting members.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Next section.
Next section is Section 4, and it's the basis of accounting and budgeting, and that begins, if you're following along in the book, on page 13. And some of the highlights of this section, really, this is just, it requires the city to follow accounting practices and financial reporting that conform with generally accepted accounting principles, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, and best practices that are provided by the Government Finance Officers Association. That is, in essence, what this whole section is about. It's just that the city will follow the pronouncements and the best practices set forth by these organizations and the way that we provide financial reports and the way that we do our internal accounting.
All right. Anything on this? Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the very last sentence, page 13, "Therefore, individual operating funds will be created with the objective of reducing the fund to government-wide reconciliation to the extent possible." I'm from South Arkansas. Can y'all explain then, give me an example, and explain what we're talking about there?
And in the, in the, in our annual financial report, we have to take governmental activity, which is in the general fund, and present it in a manner that, that mirrors that of the enterprise funds, so that we can show the city's financial statements to the end user, end user as a whole. And typically, you don't account for governmental activities, like, you know, the general fund the same way you do the enterprise funds, because they have two different purposes. And so, what that is saying is that we will account for things and funds that will ease that transition into, so when we go to provide those financial statements and reports at the end of the year, that we're able to do so with somewhat of ease. It's not an easy task to do, because there's a lot of conversion that's involved, but we have some forethought going into it to be able to show those reports to the end user in the annual financial report. So, I don't know if that helps or clutters more, but that is the intent of that.
I guess what sort of is confusing me is the objective of reducing the fund. Those words, I'm trying to keep, what is our role as a City Council to look at that annual report and see, was our objective met to reduce the fund to government-wide reconciliation to the extent possible? How do we measure that?
That could be measured, at the end of the year, when our annual financial report is complete, the auditor that is hired by City Council produces an opinion on the financial statements contained in there, and any kind of, they'll have some recommendations as well that they'll make. So, if staff is not doing this correctly, that's something that'll come out from the independent auditors, and that would be shared with City Council. So, you would know if that is being done properly at the, with the end-of-year audit report.
Good. Yeah, that goes, as I look through the entire document, anytime I look at a policy and it says, I'm looking at how do we, it's our policy, so how do we measure it? And how do we then have a, an in-state assessment of, did this policy do what we intended it to do? And if we don't understand what it is that we're trying to do, then we can't really give the policy justice. But, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Olson.
Well, I just think, I think that's a really excellent point, and in order to, I think every, every policy, we're gonna be dealing a lot more with other policies as time goes on here. And I think you do have to keep in mind, how are you going to ensure compliance with the policy that you've adopted? I think that's a question that should be asked all the way through, and maybe even in this policy, we need a section that says, "Here's how we're going to ensure compliance." And in the case of the financial policy, it's going to be your external auditor and your internal auditor that ultimately decide if you're in compliance with the policies. It's probably not going to be the City Council just making a judgment. It's going to be people you hire to look at those financial statements and the financial process to see if we're in compliance with that policy.
And the way I look at it is, because you say, "How do you measure it?", but when you have policy, it's kind of a guide to give you direction, and when you do that audit, they can come back, like when we have the audit committee that we look at things, did they do something outside policy, without a policy? Then we don't know whether something, so I think maybe that's probably what they'll find when they do the audit. Did we meet everything? Did we do everything in accordance with policy? And if we did, I think you're right, it's hard to measure it, because I think if they come back with nothing, then to me, that indicates we pretty much stayed within that policy. But if they come back and say, "Well, you guys made a decision that was outside the policy. Had we not had that policy," then you cannot tell whether it was right or wrong. But with the policy, it kind of gives us direction on, you know, what.
I may make a recommendation, Mr. Mayor, that we would then, somewhere within that sentence or at the end of it, would, this will be measured by the.
Audit, Audit Committee.
Annual audit, external audit.
External.
And validated by the internal auditor.
Yeah.
So, it is not a misrepresentation that the public thinks this is a City Council's, each individual councilperson, and then the body as a whole are supposed to ensure that we've reduced the fund balance to this.
Yeah. Okay. Mrs. King?
Thank you. To add on to that, the intent would be the council intent, these policies. We will give our intent and what we want to happen, and I'm understanding you to say you wanted the externa and the auditor to come back with, when once we give our intent, am I correct, or?
I'm just saying, whatever it is.
Oh, no, I was talking to Ms. Olson. I'm sorry.
Oh, I think so, yes.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera. You have a question for Mr. Rivera.
I understand we got a couple of policies coming, not only this one, but other policies and so forth. My question is not the policy per se. My policy is now is going to review it. My policy, my question is, when are they going to be renewed? The problem is, we keep on putting policy after policy, but we don't put suspend date on it, and they will die, because things that you don't have a suspend date, you don't go back and review. So, whatever policy we set up, we need a suspend date when that policy needs to be reviewed, because if not, it would never be reviewed, not with us or not even with the City Council coming up, because those policies, it's just like an ordinance, it's just sitting there, but they're not being reviewed. Why? Because no one pay attention for it, because there's no suspend date. So, I believe those policies need to have a suspend date, when they need to be reviewed, and what part of that year they need to be reviewed.
I think that was a thing you had mentioned earlier, right? With having that. So, we're gonna put like a date on there?
Yes, sir. So, we will do that.
Mr. Harris?
I was gonna say, with the way the wording was, that Councilman Kilpatrick was talking about, my understanding is basically in the end that, of course, we'll have the external auditor, internal auditor, and then the City Council, they'll present to the City Council, we'll just approve it, right? And so, is that what you meant when, in the language where you said it'll be a, we talked about it being approved by the City Council, or is that what you meant, right? Basically, but we just, we hear, get the information here, and we just approve it in the end, but we don't dissect it and do, you know, and all that stuff.
Right. When the auditor, when the external auditor.
Right, you're, when the auditor, when the external auditor reviews the financial reports and the financial systems of the city, they're gonna give a report to the city council, and you're gonna, you're gonna have to take an action to accept that report.
Right, yeah.
And I wanted to say one other thing. I think maybe the language that we use that Mr. Kilpatrick read there at the end of that sentence might be a little confusing. It talks about reducing, and that can be interpreted as reducing fund balance or reducing what, the intent there is that we synthesize information in a way, that we reduce a volume of information to an understandable, I don't know what the right word is. I'm having a hard time struggling with the right words. Anyway, I think we need to, we need to look at that language and change it so that it's more clear. We're talking about taking a mass of information and reducing it in a similar format and in an understandable way, so that the enterprise funds and the governmental funds can both be understood by looking at them, instead of being so separate and different. So I, I think we need to revise that language in that last sentence to, to be more accurate in what it's trying to say.
That, that would be great with me, because you talk about reducing a fund. The immediate intent is to reduce the
Fund balance.
The fund balance.
Yeah, and that's not what we're talking about.
Or the number of funds, reducing them into, because right above it, it does talk about, we'll maintain the minimum number of funds consistent with a legal and managerial requirement.
Right.
So I look down, and I go down below, and it's, it's talked about reducing funds.
Right.
Do we have too many of those funds?
I don't, that's not what we're trying to say. So we'll, we'll revise that language to try to make it more clear.
Thank, thank you, sir.
Anybody else? All right, next section.
The next section is Section Five, and that, it covers budget administration. It begins on page fourteen of the policy document, and it establishes the level of control, which is the, that's the level that expenditures may not exceed appropriations. This is set forth in, in state law, is at the fund level. And, and that's as opposed to at a particular department level. State law would allow the city to exceed a department budget. We can't exceed the overall appropriations that city council approves for the fund, though. And it also sets forth the ways of amending the budget. There's a, a budget amendment that city council approves through a budget ordinance, and there's transfers. And staff can perform transfers internally and that are approved by the city manager, as long as they follow the requirements set forth in the city charter.
Which leads me to another issue, not for today, but just as a, a heads up. Because we've reviewed this policy and we see how the city charter and our policies work, we want to come back after we've done this policy and talk to the council about changing how we do budget amendments. And that is probably going to require a charter amendment. So we need to have a discussion about a charter amendment affecting budget amendments. We're not prepared for that today. We don't want to confuse this issue, but it's something that we feel we need to have a conversation with the council about.
And that may be something we may have to look at the whole charter.
That's my fear. I, I really hate to open up the whole charter.
It's been about five years since we've done that, but I know we did that already, so.
Well, I will recommend a couple of charter amendments, but they're gonna be very limited, and you will have to do what you want with it. I, it's kind of like having, to me, it's kind of like having a constitutional convention. You never know what's gonna come out of it. And, and there are a couple of very clear things I think we need to deal with, but they're very limited and very specific. So I hate to raise the issue, but I feel it's a necessity. We, we will raise it with you.
We'll get to it down the road somewhere.
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put an asterisk by that, too, and I'm glad the city manager clarified that. I don't want to get in, in that discussion today, because the city charter is a citizen's charter, it's not the council's charter. And, but put an asterisk that we, at some point in time, we're probably gonna have to address how we do. And as Councilman Rivera has stated, you know, council may amend or change the budget by ordinance. We, we did that tonight. But when do we ever review those ordinances that we, that we do? So do we ever sunset an ordinance? Or not? Or do we just leave them on the board, on the shelf, and some days, issue arises, and then we look at it?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on.
Section Six is fiscal monitoring. It begins on page fifteen. And this section requires quarterly reports be submitted to the city manager. Those, the reports must contain certain information, and that information is outlined in the document of what those reports must contain. And in this section as well, it, it also states that the financial policies will be reviewed and updated annually by city council. So when, when we do decide on, on that language, this is where we would put that as well. And exceptions, any exceptions to this document, which there, there should be few, if, if an exception would arise, those exceptions would be identified, documented, and fully explained prior to requesting the consent of city council for the, the variance and the exception. If you have any answer, any questions that?
Any questions on this section? Mr. Johnson? He's giving it to you, Mrs. Fleming?
Okay, I just wanted to add to Mr. Rivera, when he was talking about going back, giving us a timeline on some of the things that we're doing, wouldn't this kind of fall into the category of monitoring and time level and giving us a time element to go back and evaluate some of the things that we've done and see how well we've done it in conjunction with what Mr. Rivera was talking about? Would that kind of pull tie into that, sir?
Yeah, it, it would. I, I know Mr. Kilpatrick was talking about that, too, with, about the timeline. And, and I, I think we can present those dates in, in a better fashion, so, so that you could see everything, and then include those review dates on there as, as well.
Yeah, so they're just gonna clarify and put dates on there, so.
So, 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 Ms. Fleming, is, is your comment specific to the financial policy, or is it broader to other city council policies?
I think it's kind of broader to, to all the things that we are looking at and, and in, in this report that we're looking at, more, a little, little bit more broader, sir, I think.
All right. That's what I thought.
Mr. Johnson?
Section A, it says the quarterly reports will be submitted to the city manager. Would that change anything, how we're doing it now, where the city council get those quarterly financial reports?
No, sir. That, that would continue as it currently does.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Semantics. This is called financial policies. And it says, the financial policies, that means this book. I, I would offer we change the to mean all financial policies will be reviewed annually, not just other, other financial policies dealing with things that are not included in this book.
Our intent, our intent is that all of our financial policies will be included in that book.
Okay.
We're trying, we're trying to consolidate, consolidate everything down to one spot. I think we, and I think we have.
Yes. I do, too, because I don't think we want to have an outlier out there that falls through the crack, because we didn't look at it
Right.
annually, because we're looking at the financial policy book.
All right. Anybody else?
There's a, I, I should clarify in, in my answer, Mr. Baldwin just brought it to my attention, that we, we do have an investment policy, and we have a purchasing policy that aren't incorporated into this, that, that stand alone. But barring those two policies, this, this, this is a comprehensive policy book for all of their policies.
All right, moving on. Section Seven.
Section Seven is auditing and financial reporting. This section gets into more of the financial reporting, and, and also would kind of touch on what Mr. Johnson was talking about, some current practices as well. Currently, there is a financial report that is, is posted to the, the city's website that is required by the city charter, that, that would not change. A change that this policy does place is the amount of time that can elapse before that report is completed. There is a preliminary report that the city manager will be provided within five days of month end, and the final report will be due within thirty days of month end. And that final report would, would be the report that would be posted to the city's website.
And right now, I'm waiting up to three months for that report. So basically, what I'm saying is, I, I need it much faster than that.
Yeah.
And it also requires proposals from auditing firms no later than every five years. And the, the intent of this is that every five years, the, the city should be going out and seeing if there's a, a better audit firm out there to, to audit the city. And it also lays the, the groundwork that the audit committee will review and submit a recommendation to city council of the audit proposals that are received. So the audit committee is going to be an integral part in the annual audit process, in that they will be choosing the, the auditing firm that will be doing the audit.
Which is different than now.
Yes.
Up to, up to this point, the, the staff has taken on that role. And given the nature of everything we're talking about, we feel that the city council audit committee should be the driver behind that decision-making.
Thank you, sir.
And there is some language that city council annually identifies operations and practices to be reviewed in the development of the annual internal audit work plan that is, is carried out by the city auditor.
The, on the monthly financial report, I know in the past, you know, 'cause you mentioned you get about, what, ninety days, you said now, and we're gonna go, take it to a month?
Sixty to ninety days.
And we're gonna do that in a month? What, what changes, 'cause I know in the past, one of the reasons that we couldn't get it so fast was, you know, a lot of our invoices and things, it takes time. So are we gonna do something different to make that happen in that thirty days, or?
What they've done in the past, in order to ensure complete accuracy, is they, they wait until every, all the books are closed. What I'm asking them to do is to give me a report on these timelines before the books close. So, so the reports, the, the reports that I get in five days will not be one hundred percent accurate. They might be ninety-eight percent accurate, but they're not gonna be a hundred percent accurate. But they're accurate enough for me to be able to manage the city on, and that's what I need. The, the less accurate but more timely information is more valuable to me than the hundred percent accurate information that is not timely. So that's, that's basically what's happening.
Which one is the one that we're gonna put on the website? The one that's not accurate?
No, it'll, the thirty-day, the thirty-day report will be an accurate report. And they have gotten, they have gotten better procedures and increased tools to be able to do that.
Okay, no, that's
And they assure me that they can get it done inside thirty days.
I know, I, I know that's always been an issue in the past, so I think that, that'd be great, we can do that, so.
It took a little arm twisting, a little convincing, but we can do it.
All right. Any ques, any other questions? Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to ta, tab on to Councilman Johnson's. We've, we've had a lot of conversations over the past two years about the, I apologize. Nowhere in, in either one of these, the monthly financial reporting, the annual financial reporting, or the external audit, is there anywhere in this policy that says the city council will be briefed at any given time? Preliminary reports provide to city manager, final report will be posted at, and each calendar month may be posted to the city's website. Why would it maybe when you have the final, it, it shall be posted, so that we would have access to it, if there's not gonna be a, a briefing to the city council on what the financial, monthly, quarterly, whatever it is. The same thing applies to the CAFR, says, I, I, when will the citizens be briefed? And when, when will it be posted to the website? It's never annotated in the policy. And the same thing on the external report. We get it each year, and then it doesn't, our policy doesn't mention anything about that being, but we did on the, on the monthly, we said it'd be, it will be on the website. But the other two, the, the annual finance reporting and the external audit, which are very critically important, those need to be on our website, too. Not maybe, they should, they shall be on the website. On the internal audit, on E, recommendation found to be submitted for each work plan element, and then I offer a change to that, where it says, currently, it says work plan element, and the city manager's office is responsible for implementation of proposed improvements. I would say that the recommendation will be submitted for each work plan of each individual audit, and the city council will be briefed on the findings and recommendations, and the city council will direct the, the city manager to be, is responsible for implementing those recommendations.
Something doable there?
I don't, I'm not taking the city, the city council to get involved in the, but we are the ones that are gonna be responsible to get the, the
And we normally get that, you just want it in writing, 'cause normally, we always get briefed on it, so.
But, yes, sir. Exactly. I want, I'd like to see it in writing, and I propose to the council that we would see it in writing, so that the next council doesn't look at this policy and not be aware that we're supposed to be getting those. As we found out two, two and a half years ago, as we went through the budget process, that we weren't knowledgeable, the fact. And that's one thing, the external, the external audit that we just went through pointed out the fact that the council did not get the information, that we even were gonna get a monthly report when. We, we figured that sixty days was golden. That's when, got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So you, you, you recommend that the city, right there, where it says final report to city manager within thirty days of month end, and then right after that, put something in there that the city council?
No, this would be on the next, on the item E, the internal auditor.
Okay, the auditor.
Not the external auditor, whatever, but the, the internal auditor, the audit committee will get, work, do the work plan for them annually, as stated, great in the policy. But once they've, once the, the internal auditor completes that, that work plan element, or that individual audit, and then it mentions it'll go to the city manager for implementation. The city councils, the full city council is not annotating the policy, is being briefed on that credit card audit that the internal auditor did.
Okay.
And then we should direct the city manager, then, not, not how to do it, what to do it, but directed to look at those recommendations and implement them.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Oakley?
It's on the, on paragraph C, it talks about the external audit, it's talking about the, the presentation of, of financial statements. That's in the court, I see the local government code, but is that in, in question, GAF, GAST, GFOA? Who says that?
That is, yes, yes, sir. It, that's actually in the city's charter as well. It's, every organization recommends having an annual audit. I, I think what we just listed there is, is the highest law authority that the city has to follow with, you know, at the state level. The local government code does require it. The, it is in the city's charter as well.
Because it's my concern, it's about the first, first presentation, learning about the external audit, we give the audit, but we do not them to audit. So who says that we do that? It's my concern. When we get to say it with the external audit, versus us saying, hey, this is what we want to do.
You want something in writing that says that?
But with GAF, GAST, where did, who's, I see that it's in the local government code, but that's just saying, the local government code is saying somebody within the city is responsible for doing, but it does not say, it does not say, you know, in the court, you're, in the, so, accounting But it does not say, it does not say, you know, in accordance with any of these accounting agencies, where is that coming from?
That is, that is, a standard annual operating audit is, is fairly straightforward. When, when we do a request for a proposal for auditing services, it's straightforward in what that audit firm is going to do. We, we do lay out very broad accomplishments that the city anticipates that we are going to, you know, achieve by the audit. Generally, if anything wants to go deeper than what a standard annual audit would do, then it, then we need to procure that separately as, as a separate engagement with that audit firm. Similar to the management audit that we did, you know, an annual audit would never go that deep as what the management audit went. So it's, so we'd have to do something like that. If City Council identified something that they would like to be looked into, then we would need to procure that service separate from the regular annual audit or include that when we did the RFP, that we want the annual audit plus, we would also like you to do this for us as well.
Mr. Oakley, are you talking about our external audit or the control of our internal audit?
The external, like, willing to ask for any report, in the process of the reporting before we provide the information, so, so, what everybody, I was just saying, what, which one of the audit standards, GAF, who says this sample? I'm just thinking, that needs to be in, in accordance with general audit standards of GAF, GFOA, whatever, whoever is addicted, I would say it's local government code, but it's not, but this is particularly where it's in, the presentation, prior presentation of financial statements.
We'll look in, I'll look into that a little bit further, but I, I think that the, there's an auditor, a control group for auditors that set those standards. And whatever that is, we'll put that in there.
Anybody else? All right. Next.
The next section is eight, it begins on page eighteen, and it covers revenues. And there's, the primary thing that this section goes over are user fees. And, and the policy states that user fees will be reviewed annually to determine that full cost recovery is being achieved in the user fee. And this will, and the review will occur mid-year and not be part of the budget process. And there, there is also language in this section that says that one-time revenues will be used for one-time expenses. And this is, an example of this is the right-of-way reimbursement that the city is receiving, that $1.4 million, rather than that just being absorbed into regular operations, that was put into the capital improvement fund for the Rosewood project to help fund that. So, so that's what that is addressing. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that section.
Any question on this section?
Revenues?
Hmm?
Revenues?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Mr. Oakley?
Yes, and grants, says the city will only utilize grants to meet the critical city purposes. The vast amount of how the city will pick up on government costs for the grant ends is required. I'm supposed to never say affiliation of, of what, how, how we replace grant funding, detail. So it's gonna grant something in three years, maybe in a year or another two of that grant, we need to solve, something needs to be put in place to say, this is gonna end in three years, this is gonna end next year. So this year, we need to look at, if we're gonna continue to do this, we need to look at how we're gonna pay for it.
Like the copper grants.
Our intent, our intent with this language is to say, we'll never accept it in the first place if we don't have a plan for either discontinuing it or continuing it in some fashion.
Yeah, I understand.
But we can accept it that way.
Mr. Kilpatrick, did you have some?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the next item, F, the city shall use one-time revenues for one-time expenditures. So if we had a specific donation to the city, somebody donated us $2.4 million to some of them, then we would have to pick one, only a sole expenditure. We could not use that then to do a CIP program or matching grant that just came up.
A CIP expenditure would be a one-time expenditure.
But what if we only had $300,000 in the budget for that CIP program, but it was gonna cost us 470, and we're holding it up bets until we can get that other money? Then would that fit an example of that one-time expenditure?
Yes, it would.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah, the intent there is that we're not gonna take a one-time expenditure and go hire people with it that have a thirty or a never-ending commitment to it.
Fantastic. The other item is on I, next page on twenty, write-off of uncollectible accounts. I would recommend the policy be, there's no determination. Who makes that decision to write off? Is that the City Council or the City Manager up to a certain amount? Or can a division, a director or executive director say, hey, we have a telephone bill, and we're gonna write that off? Who makes the decision? I think that should be identified in the policy.
Our current practice, sir, is that we, after ninety days, we refer the, most of our write-offs come from utility collections or some sort of user fee that's being charged. After ninety days of the city trying to collect on that, we refer it to an outside collection agency, and the outside collection agency tries to collect on it for another, probably sixty to ninety days. And then, and then the city writes it off for financial reporting purposes. I don't know that the, the expense ever is, goes away, you know, per se. If, if a, if a water bill customer owes us money today, and they came back to start-up service ten years from now, it would still show in the system that their account was past due and they owed us money. For financial reporting purposes, though, we can't show that as a potential revenue on our books, so, so we write that off.
I still ask a question, who makes that determination?
Why don't we, why don't we say City Manager or Designee?
That's fine, as long as we have it in, in writing for our policy. Who's gonna write off a, an ambulance bill that's not paid? Insurance didn't pay it?
If we.
Person's deceased, there, no way to collect it?
The point, the point brings another issue up that I wanted to make with the council. If we said City Manager or Designee. My intent, when we go through these various policies, starting here, is that we have a governing policy adopted by the City Council. There's gonna have to be some interpretation of some of those things. And, and then we get into management policy, and then there's gonna have to be some interpretation of that, and we're gonna get into standard operating procedures down at the office or the functioning level. So what we're working on is a system where we can have, we can automate this so that we have the governing policy, we have the management policy, we have the standard operating procedure, all in a cascading system. Hopefully, we can push a button on the computer, and we can look at all the governing policies. People that work for the city can push another button and see all of the policies, including the standard operating procedures. So whatever policies we adopt, we're gonna have to have this cascading system of creating policy.
Mr. Mayor, that's the reason why we have the best City Manager in this state.
Yeah.
Because my, my question was, was not, turn right, is this a governing decision? Is this a managerial decision? And whichever way it wants to go, I, the council would, would look at that. I just asked the question.
No, and, and I think that that makes sense, because a lot of times, we don't want to crisscross, you know? We don't want the governing body making decisions that should be like, like this would be like, to me, a standard operating procedure. There really doesn't even need to be a manager, because like Mr. Locke said, you know, after so many days, this would happen, after so many days, there ain't nobody has to make a decision, so that, to me, sounds like more of a standard operating procedure.
If you put City Manager or Designee, basically what you're doing is you're creating the overarching governing policy, and then you're allowing me to create the more detailed policy that will make it function.
And that's exactly the intent, is to ensure that the, the future council members out to infinity look at that and say, that's what we want, not what we're going to do.
That's right. I don't want to be working in the water department, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anybody else? All right, moving on.
Next section is nine, operating expenditures. It begins on page twenty-one. And there's some highlights of this section. It also touches on recurring revenues, should match recurring expenditures. And, and one of the biggest things that this section does is it establishes the general fund expenditure allocation. Once the general fund resources are determined, there are a few expenses that will come off the top, and this policy outlines what those are. Examples of those are fleet replacement needs that the general fund has, as well as a contingency reserve, and, and other expenses that the City Manager deems appropriate to come off. And then the remaining amount of resources for that fiscal year will be allocated according to this chart. So Public Safety will receive 73% of the remaining resources. And, and you can see, as you go down through, how much general government will receive, community services, public works, community development, and planning and development. And if you, beginning on page twenty-two, it actually details the departments that fit into each one of those budget classifications.
Anything on this? Everybody okay? Okay. No questions on this one?
The next section is ten, fund balance. And this section establishes the fund balance requirements for the different types of funds that the city has. The general fund is already at twenty, a minimum twenty-two to a maximum of twenty-five. This does institute a fund balance policy for special revenue funds. There are three special revenue funds identified in a policy that this applies to. The reason that we've picked out those three is, those are operating funds that have employees in them, so that's why those funds must adhere to the fund ba, fund balance policy. The enterprise funds, which the city currently has a enterprise fund balance policy that looks at it collectively, this policy would change that to where each enterprise fund needs to stand on its own and meet the 22% to 25% fund balance requirement. And then it, this does, this policy establishes internal service fund, fund balance, and it sets that at 3%. Internal service funds are funded by all the funds, you know, according to the services that it provides those funds. So that's why the fund balance requirement isn't as large in, in internal service funds as with operating funds. And then the final bullet on this is, any excess of fund balance in 25% or greater in the general fund or in the enterprise funds will be moved to the appropriate capital projects fund. So if once fund balance accumulates over 25%, those funds will be moved to a capital project fund and be used for a capital project for that particular fund.
I know that when we did this, that capital project fund, you know, the council voted on that, but is this the first time we actually have something in writing that says this?
Yes, sir.
Because I didn't remember if we did anything when we passed this.
Something similar to this has been done from time to time in the past, historically here.
No.
But it hasn't been done in accordance with established policy, and it has not been done in a clear enough fashion to erase questions that come up.
Yeah, yeah. Very good. Any questions? Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this the time, or do we, we have another session that we would discuss the general fund requirement of 22, minimum, 25% max?
You mean adjusting our general fund?
First time we've seen it in writing, and I would like to open up a, probably not at this point in time, but I'd like to open up a discussion whether that's a, a good figure or not. Is it a, I'd like the council to, to be able to discuss. Is that, is that maximum too much? Is that minimum too high?
The general fund part is in writing. We do have something in writing that says that?
Yes, we, our current fund balance policy reads 22.
But I think that's, because it is a different policy, right?
Yes, sir.
So that's probably something else that we'd have to discuss.
That's where I'm, I'm looking at.
We'll put it on our discussion.
Yeah. But we do have some in writing. What I was talking about earlier was that, capital projects funds. I don't think we had anything specifically on writing on that part, so.
My question, Mr. Mayor, was, if we, if we don't hold that discussion, we go through this and we validate on this policy, then we ratified that policy now, again, and I think it, I would like to see it discussed.
All right. So, so if that's the case, if that's what you want to do, Mayor, I'd like to have time to put together some background material and actually come in with a presentation about, here's what, what best practices are regarding fund balance.
And, and that's all I'm asking for, Mr. Mayor, is that we would have the opportunity to have a, a discussion before we would arbitrarily say, yep, that's.
So before we actually take any action or voting on this policy, you want that? So that's, is that gonna do anything to your timeline?
No, I think that's, we don't have a set timeline here. We're not bound by it. I think having, if that's, if that's a topic of interest, I think having the discussion before we adopt it is the, is the right way to do it.
Okay. And it's probably good, because here comes the next budget cycle, and I think it's probably appropriate to talk about that.
That's right.
It's one of the, thank you, Mr. Mayor, one of the discussions we're gonna have to have as we talk about certain, you know, the risk factor. We all understand the risk factor. But as we start seeing, as we were presented an excellent presentation of 2017 to 2037, as that revenue goes there and the expenses go here, and we're gonna exceed that, do we still want to keep 25% of our general fund in, in short, 24-hour baits and captured as hostage, when that could be, with the City Managers looking at how the risk is and what the best practices are, then we may be able to identify another $2 to $3 million that could be utilized to cut that gap some, instead of passing that on to the citizens, since that's already the citizens' money. They've already given it to us in their taxes. And we would almost double taxation if we don't close that gap between revenues and expenditures quickly.
And I think when, in looking at this, I think what we may have to look is, which one carries the most weight? Which one do we want to follow? Because we have a policy on this somewhere else, which is probably what, our general fund policy, is that what it falls under?
Yes, yes, sir.
And then we put it in here, too. So we're putting this in two different places, so if in the future we gotta change it, we gotta change it in two different policy documents. So if there's a way we can make it simpler.
What I would intend here is that the other policy that we're referring to is actually done away with when we adopt this policy. So we have one governing policy.
That, that makes sense there, yeah.
So we'll have, you know, we'll go through, we've already done the work. We know what policies are out there. We will, when we ask you to pass a resolution to adopt this policy, we'll also include there that we do away with the other policies. So we don't have a conflicting policy.
There you go. Very good.
Duplicate policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was my intent on before when I said all, instead of the financial policy, all. City Manager clarified that, that all financial policies. financial policies, all, city manager clarified that, that all financial policies will be incorporated, as we've already said before, we won't have that outlier out there that we might step on it, or forget about it, or those things of that nature.
All right, anybody else? All right, next.
The next section is 11, inter-fund loans, and that begins on page 28. This section covers loans that are provided between funds of the city that require a repayment, and it authorizes the city manager to approve short-term loans, and those are loans less than 45 days, and a good example of this are grants that the city receives, our community development block grant, we incur an expense and then submit to the federal governing, government for reimbursement of that expense. So when we first incur that expense, the general fund covers that expense for the CDVG grant. So that is really what that short-term loan is addressing, those types of activities. And then the second type would be all other inter-fund loans would be approved by city council, so anything that does not meet that short-term loan definition would be approved by city council.
Anything on this one? All right, move on before they change their mind.
Section 12 is inter-fund transfers, and there are two primary inter-fund transfers that are completed by the city. The first is to reimburse the general fund for actual general and administrative costs incurred, and this, these are costs that are incurred by departments such as the city attorney's office, the city manager's office, human resources, finance, those departments that provide services to all funds. So the costs are borne in the general fund, and then the other funds contribute their fair share to cover their portion of the cost. The other type of transfer is a franchise fee, and currently the general fund levies a 9% franchise fee to all the enterprise funds, with the exception of the drainage fund, for the use of right-of-ways and wear and tear on the streets that the enterprise fund imposes, similar to the franchise fee that is charged to other utility companies that are not related to the city. It does require that all inter-fund transfers between the operating funds be approved by city council, and this is accomplished through the adoption of the annual budget. These funds, these inter-fund transfers we're referring to are calculated at the beginning during the budget process, and when city council adopts the budget, they are setting these inter-fund transfers as well. I think that the city manager, if you recall, did a pretty good presentation on how the funds interact with one another during the budget process. It also states that bond funds may be transferred to another bond fund of the same purpose, retired debt, and for operating funds, for reimbursement resolutions that have been approved by city council.
Anything on this? Good, next.
Section 13 is capital equipment and project expenditures, and that begins on page 32. This section establishes reporting thresholds for depreciation, and that's really the only time that this information comes into play, it's how the city reports its financial statements. It sets the threshold for an individual asset at $5,000, and for a project at $100,000 for reporting purposes. It also requires an annual schedule for the replacement of capital assets. An example of this is fleet, that we do have a fleet replacement schedule that is ranked by priority, and that's what the city follows every year as we set aside funds for fleet replacement. This, the policy also states that the city will develop a multi-year plan for capital projects to be constructed within a five-year horizon, and states that budgets for projects approved by the city council will not lapse until completion of the project, and this is something that is new as well. City council is probably familiar, I think all the council members have been here long enough to approve an accumrance carryforward, that's when this comes into play. The way that the city currently approves a project, the budget for that project lapses at the end of the fiscal year, so we have to do an accumance carryforward to actually carry approval of that project into the next fiscal year. And what we're trying to do is when city council approves a road project for $5 million, that establishes the budget for that road project, that $5 million, and it automatically carries forward from one budget year to the next until that project is complete.
Anybody, any questions on this? None? Okay.
Section 14 is debt, and the general premise of this section is that the city will attempt to support capital projects with operating funds or excess fund balances to minimize the issuance of debt. The policy establishes a 25% target in the general fund for the interest and sinking component of the tax rate. For FY '18, that is at 36%, so we're not there yet, and the policy addresses that, that as long as we're moving towards the goal, that we will be deemed to be in compliance. And it sets a net revenue coverage requirement in the enterprise funds of 125%. And what that is, is the net revenues of the enterprise fund are the total revenues less the operation and maintenance expenses, whatever's left should be able to cover the annual debt service one and a quarter time, just to ensure that there's enough funds and cash flow in that fund to meet that service needs.
Anything on this? Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could interpret this in the policy to say, where we're sitting at 36%, and we want to establish a 25% goal, that it would be the policy, the governing body's policy, that we would not, inferred, that we would not issue another bond until we got to that 25%, or we would be violating our policy because we would be increasing, instead of 36% next year, we might be increasing it to 37.5%. We would increase it to 38%, and maybe the following five years, it would be increased to 42% as we gained more interest in sinking into it. So with that given, we would have to do a very aggressive payoff, something in nature, before we would ever think about, a council would ever think about issuing another bond. Am I correct or not?
Yes, sir, the one option that the city would have is in a general obligation-type bond election where we would increase the tax rate to cover the increased debt service for that bond election, that would have an impact on the, on what the tax rate percent is. So, but if you did not do something like that, then yes, then you would be going the wrong direction.
So you would have to show the citizens that you would pass a bond issue with the understanding we were going to increase your taxes at the very same time, by the same amount of that interest and sinking, to pay it off, to get us still tracking toward that goal of 25%. So that, and again, limits our ability to do bonds, and we'd have to look at capital improvement-type funds, or some other fee assessment to get this revenue back in line, or future capital improvement, massive capital improvement programs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Arera.
Kind of confusing this one here real quick. This policy will help you to understand the bonds that's out there that we obligated to pay at this point, but this policy will help you out to understand how much we really owe, and we have to pay. That's what it is, the bottom line.
Right, and, yes, and it will help us understand that issuing future debt without increasing taxes to pay it is going to take us in the wrong place.
That mean every time that we get an obligation to pay, or change of order, where we stand when we do that type of change of order, because sometimes we do this, we do this, and we don't, we got no clue where the money's going to come from to pay this out. So this will help us and guide you to understand this.
Yes, because, yes, it will, and what it will do is if we start making a decision like that, the staff is going to be obligated to come back to the city council and say, you're violating, you're violating your policy. We can't do it and stay in compliance with our policy. It's going to force a discussion around the issue.
And what I'm, maybe what I'm trying to get also is, when we get into a contract, to an obligation with someone to construct, let's say, Highway XXX, and we do understand that there will be some change of order during the process, that's, it's always happened, but would this give you a pretty good idea, how much can you take in change of order during that project per se? Do you follow me?
Yes, it will help, I don't know that it will completely address the issue you're bringing up, but it will help us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Oakley.
Thank you, Mr. Arera, we're missing a nerve, we're getting to, they mitigate, not mitigate us, but to anticipate the change orders and the contingency that's due to 10 to 15% which is a total amount that we save, so it shouldn't be, I would assume that a lot of share, you know, for 10 to 15% to accommodate the change.
That has a great deal, that has a great deal to do with how you pre-plan your project, and how much you plan it, and just so, for a level of, hopefully a level of comfort for you, we've been working for a number of months now on a capital projects plan, which we intend to bring back to the city council after the first of the year, and I've asked staff to bring, when we bring the capital projects plan back, to also accompany that with a set of capital project policies that we can use to address these change order issues and the process by which we approve and carry out projects. So I think after the first of the year, we'll be more directly addressing these very questions that you're asking.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on.
Section 15 covers cash management, begins on page 42 of the document. The section requires daily cash deposits be made as an internal control. It also requires, requires written internal control guidelines that will cover the handling of cash, how the city will conduct accounting, its accounting practices, segregation of duties, as well as some other financial matters, and it also requires the city to seek proposals from depository banks every five years.
Okay, questions? Mr. Arera.
I thought I was going to go through all night without saying anything, but I guess not. And this policy goes with the one that we just read? And this policy that we talk about right now goes hand to hand with the one that we just went through?
I think the previous one was debt, and this one is on the management of cash.
They are not, they are not closely, they're related because they're financial policies, but they are not linked together.
Any other questions? Okay.
Section 16 is on internal controls, is on page 43 of the document, and the policy requires that the city establish and maintain an internal control environment that will safeguard the city's assets. It requires the finance department to issue internal control procedures based on recommendations from city staff, the city auditor, who is, of course, city staff, it's just, I think, important to explicitly list recommendations from the city, from the city auditor, as well as independent auditors. Finance department will administer an in-house audit program to review and monitor the internal controls that are established, and department heads are responsible of ensuring internal control procedures are falling, followed within their respective departments.
Anything on this? Okay, good, next.
Section 17 is, covers economic development funding, and it begins on page 46. In this section, the policy states that the city may use authorized funding sources to promote the development or redevelopment for economic improvement. It provides for incentives and funding that include contributions to the Economic Development Corporation, KEDC. Currently, the city does that through contributions from the general fund and the water and sewer fund. It also allow, allows for tax incentives that could be offered, as well as tax increment financing.
Questions on this? Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last item, number five, maximum tax abatement shall be 100% abatement for a maximum term of five years. Is that, is that pretty well standard business practice?
I'm sorry, sir.
I don't know what, I don't know what the best practices are in this area. I could tell you in the jurisdictions that I've worked in, which is a limited sample, of course, the policies there were 100% for typically 10 years, so this is a standard that is more restrictive than other cities that I've been in.
So, I guess the question I would have is this, could this be construed as a council's policy that might take us out of competition for economic development? If we, if we don't know what, we should know what all the other like municipalities that would be competed for, competing for the same like industries, do they have a restrictive policy that we can't offer? Can't, excuse me, we can't compete with them because they have a 10-year, and certainly a large, a large firm is going to look at that as a definite negative from the very start of the conversation, if you're going to grant them the significant 100% of their tax abatement for 10 years versus five years. So are we tying the hands of our economic development gurus that are going out there?
Let us do a little best practice research before we come back to you with an answer on that. Typically, it's a little more complicated than that, because some, some cities have a portion of their sales tax, for example, that is used for economic development incentives, and cities have an entire basket of different kinds of incentives that they can offer, so it's, it's not easy just to compare straight across the board, but, so let us do a little bit of best practice research and give you a better answer to that question.
Appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anybody else? All right, next.
The next section covers e-commerce, begins on page 48 of the document, and this section And this section states that the city will fully utilize available technology to expedite cash payments and receipts to en, to enhance employee productivity and provide customer satisfaction. Some examples of how the city is doing this currently is we are trying to migrate vendor payments from paper checks to electronic forms of payment. That is the virtual card payment program that city council authorized us to move forward with. That is an example of that. And something that we'd like to do is provide more internet payment options to citizens. And that's covered in, in the policy as well.
All right. Anybody had any questions on this section? Mr. Oakery.
I would, I would absolutely love to be able to be electronic and not have a surcharge. We'll be looking for ways to make that happen. We've got a team actually working on that now, trying to figure it out.
That's right, you've got more competition too. Anybody else?
How the world works now.
Yeah? All right, 19.
19 is the, covers financial consultants. And this is an extremely short section. It just says that the qualified financial advisors and consultants will be used as needed and that advisors and consultants will be selected through a competitive process.
All right, good, easy. Anybody, any questions on this? No? Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is it.
That's it, I'm going to give you the record tonight.
I dwelled a lot into that because I want, this is going to be our first policy. And the first policy, I think, it needs to, needs to set the standards for this, for this council of how we're going to, to be a governing body and not a managerial body. Are financial advisors in the same category as professionals like the engineers and where a request for qualifications goes out instead of a request for proposal?
I, I would think that the financial advise, my answer would be no, I don't believe so. I think in, in this context that the financial consultants are the, like Dan Wegmiller, who was at a meeting this evening, he assists the city with bond issues and, and debt payments. As, as well as of financial consultants that we may hire to do rate studies. We, from time to time, we do some rate studies. And I, I don't know if a, if an engineer would fit into that definition. I don't know if the, if the city manager interprets that any differently, but that's how I would interpret that.
I didn't notice in the policy it talked about requests for proposals or requests for qualifications. How is it competitively determined? What would be the council's policy on financial advisors? Are they competitive selected or are they selected by qualifications?
They're, they do, they are exempted in that they're, they are, most financial advisors are professional services and, and those are procured with an RFQ, a request for qualifications.
I'd make a recommendation that maybe we put a sentence blurb in there that, that identifies them as a professional advisor and the request for qualification process is normally used or something of that nature. So that the council policy would be.
You said.
Identified to the citizens.
Identified as what, something that has to do with the finance?
Yeah, the qualifications to, to use a.
Financial.
Financial advisor, that that, you know, it says qualified financial advisors will be used as needed. What is our selection process to determine? It's not only the same one or is it just as, as exempt and a request, RFQ is issued and you base that on qualifications, not on cost?
Exactly, that's, that's how that works.
We need to change the language.
Yeah.
So the citizens would understand what our policy, our policy is.
Okay, Mrs. King.
Mr. Olson, we have, as the council requested, a lot of input on this financial policy. And with that being said, do you have an estimated time when this will go into play, like before January 2018 or?
Well, we, we certainly want, we want to make sure we've answered the council's questions. We've got a little homework to do on it, but I would venture a guess that we'll have it in place before the beginning of the calendar year.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, you did an excellent job, you have the staff, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, we're getting close there. Section 20.
Yes, this is the actual last section of the grant, of the document. It's grants, it's section 20, it's on page 51 of the document. And this section states that the city will seek grants that are consistent with the objectives and priorities that are set by city council and that ongoing costs will be identified, planned and considered prior to applying for a grant. The, the city does have a, a grant process where the, when, prior to a department submitting for a grant, it goes through the finance department. So finance can review and ensure that we're properly accounting for these types of costs.
Right, anything, Mr. Oakery?
Yeah, where it was before, okay.
All right, anybody else? All right.
The, the final slide I have is just the, the next steps. Obviously, we want to address any of the questions or concerns that city council addressed or brought up this evening, which we have a list of items that we need to get back with you on. And then ultimately looking to gain consistency to move forward to adopt the policy.
I think, is everybody okay, based on those changes and those questions? I guess what you'll do is come back with all those changes so that the council can look at it. And then from there, we can put it into policy. The only thing is now we have that one thing where we want to talk about our general fund before we do this, so.
We'll try to coordinate all of that together.
Yeah. Mr. Oakery.
I would like to try to get the background material and be able to do all of that at one time. If we can't do it, then we can follow your suggestion and kind of neutralize the discussion for a future time.
Mr. Rivera.
I understand you're going to send some, I mean, you're going to go ahead and put it, all the changes together and so forth. Is any way possible that we get this through email or something so we could see it before we come into the meeting?
Absolutely.
You're talking about with the changes, because you got a copy of it.
Yeah, I know, well, I know we got a copy, I'm talking about the new changes coming up.
Changes, yeah.
Guys, implement.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, I know we got a copy.
We want to make sure you, that you're fully informed when you have the discussion. We don't want to spring it on you and try to press you.
I just want to think anything new that, that we discussed tonight, if you want to put it together or anything else that we're going to discuss. I just want to make sure we see it before we come here.
Yes, sir.
Any new changes, what I mean.
So I think the, I can say for the most part, everybody's okay with moving forward to the next step, right? So we do got a consensus on that. So any other questions for Mr. Locke on anything here? You guys did such a great job that you can have next Tuesday off, how's that?
Mr. Locke, thank you so much.
With that, I don't think we have anything else on our agendas. Motion by Mr. Kilpatrick, second by Mrs. King to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourned, just say aye. We are adjourned, have a great Thanksgiving. I was going to say, Thanksgiving.